Good morning. It is Wednesday, April 12, 2023. And thank you for joining us for the Clark County Council Council Time Meeting. We begin at nine o'clock and then we go through our meeting agenda. And then we'll have three executive sessions today. So first, I'd like to ask staff and others if there is any amendment to the agenda.
Yes, Chair, if we can add one additional executive session for pending litigation for five minutes.
So that would be seven point four?
Correct.
And there being no objections, that addition is made. Are there any other?
So Madam Chair, I have no objections, but I want to ensure that we manage our time today and that we provide a break for staff for lunch and the council, should we run over, so that we don't have six or seven hours of continuous meetings, which are very inefficient.
In that case, I would charge all of the councilors to be cautious of how they use their time when addressing the group, because wow, that time can go fast. Are there other amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing. I'm sorry?
No other amendments, thank you.
Okay, very good. We begin then with public comment, which is on the agenda items only. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak, staff?
Yes, Chair, we do have one individual online. Caller, please go ahead after your muted and state your name and your comments.
This is Kimberly Goheen Elbin. I'm a citizen of Clark County. It's good to see Councilmember Mel Belkot there today. I do not know why the Chair is never there, but she's always online. We like to see people in person, which brings me up to my, the criminal trespass letter that you folks gave to me. And I'd like to address this council right now about that. I want to be in-person assembly. There was no reason given. I was not disruptive for the law.
Madam Chair, is that an agenda item?
And also, I want to mention that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Medvigie.
This is a, also about the Vancouver.
Counselor Medvigie, what was your, your, your point there?
Yeah, I didn't hear the substance of this comment on any agenda item.
And neither did I. So do you have something on the agenda item?
Speaking on the pollution of the water here in, in Clark County. And that is on the agenda. Going to take $70 million to find a filter cleaning system. We don't even know where the pollution's coming from, the contamination.
What agenda item are you addressing, ma'am?
And this council has not, you know, I don't have my agenda paper on me right now, so I'm, because I'm on the phone. But I want to let the people know that, you know, if you want to hold a minute, I could look it up, but I don't. But I want to let the people know that there is pollution in our water, and I want this council to direct, address that. I want you to address the deaths that was caused by COVID back then.
We'll ask you to come back another time when you have the agenda item before you. Is there anything on the agenda that you wish to address? Hearing nothing, I believe it is time to move on to the next caller.
Yes?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I will take that minute to get on the meeting here. So I do want to say that you're, it's not real transparent on your online meeting agenda, where you'll have the date of 4/10, which was Monday, you put a weekly calendar. I scroll up and I only see 4/12 and then 4/18 on your calendar agenda. The 4/12, which is today, does not give the time on your online, so nobody knows what time that's going to be. And then also, you don't have, let's see here. It's just a little complicated when you get online, you, you know, as a citizen here, so. Yeah, I'm going to talk about old business, because I'm sure on April 5, we were speaking about the COVID deaths and everything, and I want to remind people that this council.
Your time has expired. The three minutes is up. And now if we could move on to additional callers or persons who wish to testify.
Chair, there are no additional callers or anyone in the office, in the audience. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So we move to old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of April 5?
Motion to approve the minutes, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any additions, changes, edits? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as drafted. Space planning. Kathleen Otto, would you like to introduce this topic?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Michelle Schuster will be going over an option. This is specifically for the Family Law Annex, in which their lease is expiring and impacts Superior Court as well as CJC. So she'll briefly go over what options there are and the recommendation from the two organizations. And then based on council's discussion today, we'll have something on the agenda next Tuesday. So, Michelle.
Good morning. Michelle Schuster, Interficialities Manager. So, over the last couple of years, we've been looking at various options with our Children's Justice Center and our Family Law Annex to find them a new home, because their current lease is expiring in May of 2024. We have come up with two solutions for them. One is to rent the Old City of Vancouver building located at 210 East 13th. And the second option is to build out space on the first floor and the third floor of the Public Services Centre for those two departments. The preferred choice by both of the departments is the rentable building at 210 13th, East 13th Street. That one gives them the space they're needing, needed parking options that they're not going to have down here for both the judges and the visitors and constituents who come to their building. And so we've got some concept drawings. I don't know if we can bring those up. Let's do the PSC one first. So currently, on the fifth floor of the PSC, we've got the IT department on the north side of the building. And then on the south side of the building, we have the Otters area and HR. And we, all those departments can downsize if needed. You could go to the next drawing. And then we would take that space and everything you see in the pink and the purple. And this is just a concept. This would not be what it would look like in the final. We just need to make sure we can fit the space in. This is what the space for the Children's Justice Center could be built out on that floor. It does give them a little bit more space than they currently have at their current lease, which they have outgrown that space. And then the first floor of the PSC would be built out. We would have to remove some tenants from that floor, and then we could build out about two-thirds of that floor for the courts. And we don't have that one, I don't believe, today. And then the second option is the 210 13th Street, if you could bring up those. And this building has five floors. Two of the floors are currently in rough condition. And so what you're seeing is the very bottom floor here, and this could be built out in the future. We don't have to do this build out currently. It would be for jury assembly areas, because they are needing in the future some jury assembly areas for the Family Law Annex, for one of their courtrooms. The next floor, if you could proceed to the next slide. We would look at building out the next floor of that building to be used for this Children's Justice Center. And so this is just sort of a concept drawing, so that we could see if we could fit their space needs there. And then if you can move to the next slide. And this is the main floor of the building, where the main entrance is located. And so in the pink, you would see that we'd again build out some space for the Children's Justice Center on this floor also. And then the rest of the space would become the Family Law Annex. And so this would be their large courtroom, which would have a jury's box and the jury deliberation room on it. And then next floor. And then again, more space for the Family Law Annex. This would house two courtrooms, a larger one and a smaller one. And then administration space and judicial chamber space. And then the top floor of the building would again have another courtroom in it, and then a future courtroom phase, should we need it, and then a lot of court administration areas and judicial chambers for them. And so, as you can see, this space has a lot more square footage for them to use. It has future build-out spaces. The courts are continuing to grow and we're continuing to get more judges. And so those are the two options. And, and Children's Justice Center and Family Law Annex have deliberated over these and many other choices they've looked at. And they have come back with the determination that this space at 210 East 13th would be the better space for the functionality of their operations and future expansion. The PSC would give them equivalent to the space they have now in their current building, but no option to grow as, as their department grows. If we could go to the next Excel document. And then go to the summary tab, please. It's the third table. And so with this, this shows the cost options for the building. If, we've got about $15.5 million to build, to build out for any of these locations. And then what you're seeing on this form is the rental rate. So for the Public Service Centre, should Family Law Annex and CJC move in there, their rent would be approximately $793,000 for year one for that space. They're currently at just over $500,000 for the rental in their current space. The current property management company, their ground lease to run the operations on that building do expire when our lease expires. And so the new property management company, the owners of the building, would continue to rent to us their current location on a short-term basis while we build out a new space. But they will raise the rent for that, so it'll go from about $500,000 a year up to $722,000. And you'll see that in column K, line 12, for the first year. And then with the City of Vancouver building, the rent on that can still be negotiated, but these are the rough numbers we're getting. It does have some tenant improvement money built into it, which we should not need, because we do have our own tenant improvement bucket that's been awarded already. And we'd be looking at just over $1 million for the first year rent on that building, because it's significantly more square footage than the other two properties. And then additionally, with the staff report we presented, there are two letters attached, one from the Children's Justice Center and one from the Family Law Annex, with their support of the choices. Any questions? I know I went through that quickly.
Yes, Michelle, realizing that all of them have $15 million as the bottom line, what is the comparative cost between the two options? Say, for example, for CJC being on 13th versus being in the, in the Public Services building? And likewise with FLA?
As far as the, the total cost?
Not the, not the total that takes you to the $15 million, but the, the cost of the build-out, the cost of the maintenance of it and so on. What is the difference?
So the build-out is going to be about the same in both locations. We're expecting that to come right in around that $15 million mark, when we have done some projections on what would need to be done to both buildings to bring them up to functionality for those departments. So, so that would be an initial build-out. And then as far as rental, currently, as I said, they're paying about half a million dollars in their current location for them to go over to the Public Service Centre, and this is for both departments as a whole. It would increase to about $793,000 for the first year. So almost $300,000 increase per year for rent, rent and utilities for them to move over to the PSC. And because we've had those leases for a very long time at our current location, so the prices are well below what's current market value in the area. And then for the City of Vancouver, Old City Hall Building, that option would look about $1 million per year for the rental. So about $200,000 over what it's costing us at the Public Service Centre. But those prices are still negotiable, because we've just began talks with them. And as I said, that does have some tenant improvement build-out money in it. And so because we're bringing our own tenant improvement money, they'd be willing to take that off. That reduces it down about a dollar twenty, I think, a square foot roughly. So that'll bring that price down. So we're definitely hoping to get the price below that $1 million, but at this time, we would need to do negotiations with the property management company to see where we would land. But that would be the most, that $1 million for the first year.
Thank you, Michelle. Other questions from council? Go ahead.
It may have been in the documentation, but I don't recall reading it. How long is the lease for? Or how long would the lease be?
For the City of Vancouver, Old City Hall buildings, is that the one you're talking about?
Correct.
So we would like to look at a 20-year lease with an additional four, five-year renewals, so that we get a commitment for long-term. And the landlords are very interested also in a long-term commitment, just because we will be paying a lot of money in there, and we don't want to have to disrupt these two services again as we're having to do with getting them moved out of their current rental spaces. And so we could have possibly up to a 40-year guaranteed lease with the 20-year initial and the four, five years, or 40-year lease.
Great, thank you.
Are there questions from council?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not sure on the first and fifth floor, what, what happens to the, it looks like people would be displaced and where they would end up going.
Correct. So on the fifth floor of the Public Service Centre, IT does not currently need all the space they have. And so they would consolidate into the back southwest corner of the building. So their footprint would be reduced by about half, and that's because they have a lot of people who are working remote now and could continue to work remote. The Otters Office also currently has a lot of remote workers, and so they are willing to give us some offices that are currently not being used to convert. And then HR, we would most likely move them up to the sixth floor into where the Communications Department is, and then find a home for the Communications Department, because they don't need all that space currently. They've got two employees in a space that could hold the HR employees who are working onsite. And then for the first floor, we currently have RTC down there renting the space. And so we would need to discontinue the lease with RTC, and they would need to find a new home elsewhere. They would love to continue renting the space. And then downstairs also, we have Community Development, the Permit Centre. They are going to a new electronic permitting system. And so they're able to do a lot more remote work with our citizens. And so they could consolidate. They currently have the majority of the third floor, and they would move the people from the first floor up to the third floor, where they have room for them. And then the other space down there that we'd be getting rid of would be what we call the Dragonfly Cafe. And so would eliminate the possibility of having a cafe, restaurant, coffee shop in our building in the future, because that space would be built out for the Family Law Annex. We do have other tenants who have expressed interest in the spaces in the PSC, so they would not sit empty should we decide to go with the other building. Public Works is looking for more space. Cressa has shown some interest in space on the fifth floor. Auto Licensing would like to move into the PSC, into the permitting space, if we don't use it for the Family Law Annex, as that would give elections more room in their building, because they have outgrown their, their space in the Fortnight Franklin. And then also, as I said, RTC would really like to continue their leasing of the space down there. And so we do have other uses, should we determine that other option is the best course to go. We would have people to rent the other spaces in the PSC building.
Thanks for that. It's a lot of moving parts. Well, I guess if you're looking for a direction, I think I would lean toward the 13th Street option, since we know there's likely to be a need for expansion and just considering if there would be a need in the future to move again. That'd be very disruptive and probably expensive as well. So that, that would be my thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of comments, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So first, just some observations. You know, we, we have so much expensive space downtown Vancouver among our buildings. And most of it's languishing, whether it's storage. If you were to walk through this building, and obviously this is a new time after the pandemic and a lot of increased remote working, and that's a national trend, if not an international trend. But if you were to walk down just about any of these hallways on any floor, it is not a bubbling hub of activity. In fact, it's hard to find people sometimes throughout the building. You know, downstairs, although I miss the restaurant, they didn't have many vegetarian options, but I do miss that meeting space as well as ability to get food. But there is so much empty space, unused space, especially in light of the adjustment in remote working. Certainly, all the corporations and businesses around the nation are now adjusting to that. And, you know, occupancy rates and, and office buildings are changing as a result. And so I'm not, you know, the comment is, we need to really be prudent and make best use of all of our office space. I, I was not in favor of having yet again another building rented between Vancouver and us. And at least those leads and the prosecution unit that deals with the CJC children and has to marshal them through the court process, they were in favor of moving them into this building as well. I mean, the main objection was it's an imposing building. It doesn't have a welcome entryway, especially right now, with some of the homeless issues we have. But all that could be ameliorated. So I'm not looking for more indifferent office space that we have to rent in another location downtown. I think it's a poor choice. You know, the board itself from CJC voted differently, but it was a mixed vote. And again, the people that are most in charge of getting the criminal process completed with the least harm to the children were in favor of moving into this building. And I favor that for many of the same reasons. And it's somewhat of a nuance, and this is more of a question, but, you know, as we move forward with whatever choice, you know, if you look at the data for the number of interviews being conducted annually, it hasn't been much of a scheduling challenge. So to triple that capability adds a lot of cost. I'm not against having the office space and interview rooms, but the observed interview rooms has a lot of additional cost to it. And it's triple the capacity it has right now. And I don't see any data or forecast in the near term that would justify that kind of additional expense. So it just gets to the broader issue of who's rationalizing these somewhat notional floor plans. You know, years ago, before we even started talking about this, we had a proposal from CJC on remodeling their own space. And it was going to look a lot different than any of these floor plans that we've subsequently seen. So I guess the question is, are you doing work in actually rationalizing the requested floor space in any of these locations and how it's configured? Or are we really, this is really just notional? It's, you know, we're not, we're certainly not, it's not an architectural rendering. We haven't put engineering or cost to it. But where, where are we at on the different floor plans?
Yeah, so these are concept drawings. We did take the feedback that we received from the departments and the, the staff in the departments and with CJC, their, their partner agencies out there that work with them, the City of Vancouver, the attorneys, the detectives. And currently, they do have three interview rooms, and that is what is shown in these plans, is three interview rooms. So it is like-for-like of what they currently have. We did not add interview rooms to either of these additional ones. They are what they have currently. But yes, these, these are just basically renderings to make sure that the spaces would fit their current operations, to make sure that we could get enough offices in, enough judges' chambers, enough courtrooms for their current, what they currently have. And then the expansions that both the departments know about coming up as far as additional things they might need in the near-term future. And so we, these are, like I said, concept drawings to make sure that we could fit stuff in the space. Once we do get into hiring the official engineering architectural firms, then, you know, we might have to move some stuff around. But we did build these based on the spaces that were there, where there's load-bearing walls, so that we could see what could fit in. So, so there was some stuff done. MANG does have architects on staff, and so they helped with the rendering of these drawings.
Michelle, can I add something to that?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall, you mentioned, I know that Counselor Medvigie, we've talked about this, with the courts floor downstairs. If we were to put this at the PSC, there's no movement for any growth. And we know with our population, the courts are a county-wide service, a service to city and the county. And there's no space downstairs with the ME's office, with RTC, to build out any further. So we're limited in that spacing downstairs. With CJC, I understand there's some nuances that are there with what space is needed. But with the courts, we know, we went from six judges in Superior Court to 11. They're slated to get a new one, you know, with our population. We know we're out of space at our current courthouse. If you walk through there, you can see that. So I just wanted to put that out there for the first floor. It's, it's very limited for what we can do with the courts.
And I also wanted to add, this, we pulled this piece out of the county-wide space planning because of the need with the lease. But yes, we're looking at maximizing the use in this building, knowing that it looks different on, you know, can we rent it out to other agencies? So that process is still moving forward. This was just the time-sensitive piece.
You say interview rooms. I'm not sure what you are referring to. Specifically, I'm wondering, will the judges have more access to small rooms where I, there, there are IT facilities for discussing and talking with a, an inmate and his or her attorney? Are there additional facilities for that beyond what there are now?
Yes, so there would be additional in, in the Family Law Annex space. We, in the PSC, we couldn't really build out many additional areas for lawyers to meet with their clients. But in the Old City of Vancouver building at 210 East 13th, we would have the ability to build out a lot more of those meeting rooms for clients to meet with their attorneys. And you'll see those, like in this drawing, you'll see it outside the small courtroom. There's some, there's two there near the vestibule. On the other floors, you'll also see where we've added more of those in. We're also looking, another space planning we're doing at the same concurrently is with the jail remodel. And the jail remodel will have more built-in attorney-client remote meeting rooms, where they can take the, the inmate to one of those rooms, and then they could promote. Because right now, they do have some of those, but it's definitely not enough. And so that's also something we're looking with the jail remodel. But, but this building definitely will be able to fit a lot more of the attorney-client rooms. And as far as the PSC, we won't be able to fit nearly as many.
Well, that's great to hear that more can be accommodated in this building, because my understanding is that that will be a huge need, not just now, but of the future. So accommodating that is really desirable, I feel.
Yeah. We can accommodate more at the 210 East 13th. The PSC, it would be a struggle to fit more.
Right. Where is the Law Library in the 210?
The Law Library will stay in the main courthouse. We did not have any plans to move the Law Library over. This was really to get services for the family law annex. And currently, the family law annex does not have a Law Library. The Law Library is in the main courthouse, and we do plan on keeping it in the main courthouse.
Thank you. And are there other questions from counsel? And Michelle and Kathleen, I believe that you are requesting that the counsel approve the relocation of these two facilities today. Is that correct?
We actually--
I think--
Go ahead, Kathleen.
No, it's just to get the feedback, answer questions, and get an overall direction. The actual approval will be under next week's council meeting, under separate business for your consideration. So that would be the final consideration.
So if you're wanting just a general feeling, I think you have it from one counselor already. I would agree with what she had said, that moving to the 210 makes so much sense to me, given all the variables that you've talked about. And are there other perspectives?
Chair, I would just mention that I agree. I think it's a good move.
Great.
Yeah, so I tried to express my disagreement, and I thought it would be best to move here.
Well, we do have, I think everyone except Counselor Belkot at this point.
Yes, I agree. I think it would be a good move.
So in general, there is some feedback. And does that take you then to next week's work that you have to do?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for your report. There's so much behind what you gave us today, and we know that and appreciate it. And thank you for the comprehensiveness with which you approach this.
Thank you very much.
Rules of procedure, item 2.3. Kathleen?
I will hand this over to Leslie, who was updating the draft pursuant to the council's last discussion.
Good morning, counsel. This shouldn't take too long. Based on our last council time where we discussed this, the idea was to move the council vacancy policy to its own separate ordinance. So if you'll note, that's nowhere in the rules of procedure currently. I just took that out, and we'll talk about that next. So then there were very minor changes that were made. Let's see here.
Well, I'm just, with the pause, I'm just going to jump right in. When did we eliminate the two-to-one vote, two-to-two vote language, which was really simple and explanatory and fills a gap on Robert's rules? It just completely disappeared on this version. I don't remember a consensus saying that wasn't a good idea. Did that get moved to somewhere else? I mean, there's no longer mention of Robert's rules, which was guidance, not bound. But there was a gap in Robert's rules in this process, and it caused quite a bit of consternation here. It's a simple fix. What happened to it? Why was it eliminated? We're back to where we were before, on a two-to-two vote, motion fails. I mean, that--
Counselor Medvigi, if I may, and maybe I misunderstood the discussion, but it was my understanding that a majority of the council at that time had wanted to remove that other language and had added the language that you just mentioned, was that the motion fails. And the current rules already state that the Robert's rules are a guideline, and I'll try to locate that section of it. But I can cert, that's why it was removed. But I, maybe I'm--
So, Madam Chair, is that true? I mean, I must have missed that meeting or missed that guidance, because I didn't hear any counselor object to it. It seems like a very simple, common sense fix, not, it doesn't run in foul of any other rule or law--
That is my recollection as well.
--and shows the gap that we experienced in great measure for a substantial period of time before Dick Reilinger had been appointed.
That is my recollection of our discussion as well. But I would like to see the language, Leslie.
Okay, let's see if I can pull up a different one. I may have to go to the past council time.
While you're looking, if I, I could just share my memory of what occurred. There was some, I think the two-to-two vote, there was agreement that that would fail. The question seemed to me to be whether or not you can reconsider. And there was another, and I can't remember the term that was used, that you can bring it back. It's not a reconsideration, but you can bring it back at a subsequent meeting. And I think that's, my sense was, that's what we agreed to. There's no specific language related to that. It is all encapsulated in Robert's rules.
Yeah, there's even a stronger reason for a two-to-one vote in favor of something that doesn't pass. It doesn't fail. But because of a two-to-one in favor of not having the required three votes, I mean, it's a no-brainer that if we haven't taken any further action, that forecloses future action, that we reconsider that. So my recollection's different from Counselor Marshall's. I don't know why this is so hard.
I recall this discussion too. And I'm not 100% certain on how we determined, but I do remember us having that discussion about if, and I also remember us discussing whether there was like a legal opinion as to whether a two-to-one counting as a positive action conflicted with our charter, if I remember correctly. And I don't remember ever hearing that. But the last thing I do remember was discussing that, and I don't remember how it turned out. But I do recall discussing this renew or some term that we were talking about, where we could bring it back up at a subsequent meeting.
So Kristen's going to pull up the last rules of procedure. The, on the current one that's on for today, item O on page nine actually puts, in the case of a tie vote on any proposal, the motion fails to pass. The fails to pass is what council directed to include. And I, I'm not going to share my recollection, because I honestly thought it was, it's already outlined in the rule, or in the Robert's rules on how to deal with it. So therefore, it was redundant to put it in here. But Kristen's pulling up the one from the last discussion on March 15.
What we've seen before you now is what was in the draft that was discussed on March 15, and this is the one that had the information about the two-to-one or two-to-two vote. I don't know if the council wants to have further discussion on this, or, you know, read through this.
Well, reading through it, I'm glad to have these words before us, because that is consistent with what I do remember. And so I think our discussions should start from this, since that's kind of where, I believe, our discussion left off, that this is what we wanted.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. So I guess I would need direction from the council, because as to what language you want to include, I will state that the section 8.2 of the Charter states there has to be three affirmative votes for something to move on. So just pointing that out.
We had considerable discussion over the word "lost" in the first sentence of "O." Leslie, do you recall how that ended up?
Yes.
I thought it changed to "failed."
It did. So what you're looking at now is what was in front of the council on March 15, because you had asked to see that prior language that we were talking about. What's in the current one is it's in section O, is that in the case of a tie vote on any proposal, the motion fails to pass.
Yes. Let's keep this up, so we're with what is the most recent that we have agreed upon, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Otherwise, it gets a little confusing.
The reason we brought up the March 15 one is because you had asked to see the language that was taken out. And so that other, the March 15 version has the motion to renew, motion to reconsider language that, my understanding was that a majority of the council wanted that taken out of the rules of procedure, which is why it's not here.
Yes, I recall that what is now shown on page nine is the last that we had discussed, and therefore, more or less agreed upon.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be voting against this, because I don't understand how we got here. My only objection to the proposed prior language were the caveats. I thought that was surplusage, and, you know, where it said, "except in these situations," I thought that complicated things. But the two-to-one vote, the two-to-two vote is something we should have addressed and should address today. But if, I guess I'm the minority, that's fine. I'll just vote against it.
Can I clarify something real quick?
Go ahead.
So as it stands in what we're looking at on the screen right now, that essentially means that any vote that does not get three fails. However, Robert's rules of orders allow us to either renew or reconsider at the following council meeting on that specific issue. Is that correct?
And before you answer, that's the whole reason why we brought this up, because we were told by the PA's office that it did not provide a possibility to reconsider in any manner. And that's why I came up with that language. Okay, well, let's fill the gap, because it's ridiculous when you have a two-to-one in favor of something, but because of the charter requiring three votes, which makes sense, that it was dead when you had only four counselors or three counselors present. It just is an impediment to conducting and concluding business that doesn't need to be there. So this was to fill the gap and explain what Robert's rules allows, reconsideration.
So, thank you, Counselor Young and Counselor Medvigi, also for your comments. And just to clarify, motion to renew and motion to reconsideration are two separate things. And it's kind of a complicated issue. So it really depends on the particular thing that's happening, whether or not it would be a motion to renew or a motion to reconsider in terms of whether it's done in the same hearing, or same meeting, or a different meeting. So, but that is pursuant to Robert's rules. And I'll just reiterate that the current rules of procedure, the last section, which is, I think that's 19, rules of procedure B states that the council will rely on the latest edition of Robert's rules as a reference, although strict adherence is not required. That's the language that's already in these rules of procedure.
And given that, there is clarity on that because of the reference to Robert's rules. However, in O, I think the question is not that. I think it is, what is the vote? And are we saying this, in the case of a vote which has not reached, this is going to be very wordy, in the case of a vote which has not reached three votes on any proposal, the motion fails to pass? Is that what we're saying in O?
Yeah. Kristen, if you could scroll down just a little bit, because right above it, it does, it was actually the, right there, three votes are required to adopt a motion in N.
So just to state it in a different way, Madam Chair, because we had this issue, it was a real issue that we received contrary advice on, that did not allow us to readdress the issue that was inconclusive. What is the harm in filling that gap with the language that we had proposed last session? What is the harm?
Are you referring to the language that is before us right now? I see no harm in this.
I'm not sure what you just said. I would like the language back in that specifically outlines the two-to-one vote or two-to-two vote tie that doesn't allow a motion to move forward. It should be able to be readdressed when you have a full council, or if someone changes their mind at a future date.
Would you see that in O?
The one caveat to that, the one exception to that is where, because of that tie vote and inaction, something has occurred that makes it a foregone conclusion. Some action has occurred where we can't legally reconsider a vote. So the question is, what is the harm in filling that gap when you have an inconclusive vote of two-to-one or two-to-two? And that language was in the prior rules that we discussed, and I thought favorably discussed. So I was surprised to look through it this morning and see that it was just completely absent.
I have no objection to that, Counselor, and feel that it belongs in O if it is to be placed back in the text.
Is there any affective difference between this text and the one that we previously had, aside from it's just kind of laid out how the process works? Is there any effectual difference?
The language entirely, this language here in O is completely gone.
Right. I understand that, but that may not actually change how things happen procedurally. That's my question, is if we, whether we include this or not, does it make a difference?
In my experience, yes, because when we had that happen, we were told, and it wasn't this PA, you can't reconsider it. If we had this language in, we could say, it's right in the rules. Of course we can. Next meeting, when we have all of our counselors here, or the one that's on vacation, or the one that abstained, they changed their mind, you know, at a future date, we could reconsider it. If we had this language in, it would be a specific gap filler.
Counselor Medvigi, if we took, in the event of a two-to-one or two-to-two vote, and plopped that into the other O that we were just looking at, if you wouldn't mind bringing that up, does that, right here, and put it right before this, would that not fill the gap, as you're saying, with clarity?
So the simple answer is yes. But my objection, as long as it doesn't include all those exceptions that were originally in, those were added by the PA at some point. They were not proposed by any counselor that I know of, and I thought it was redundant and overly complicated. Again, the one caveat is if we have a vote, and it doesn't pass, and then some legal action occurs, something becomes a fait accompli that may legally prohibit reconsideration. That would be the only caveat.
So from that, I am thinking that, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the case of a two-to-one or two-to-two vote, or a tie vote on any proposal, the motion fails to pass. Period.
What of the language to be able to reconsider upon a majority vote?
Well--
That's the whole thrust of this.
That is, that is in Robert's rules. So we can do that.
Chair, if I could clarify, because I feel like we're going a little bit around in a circle here. There is-- There is reconsider, and there is renew. And it's unfortunate that when this came up before, that renew was not discussed or as an option. Reconsideration has certain sideboards. Renew, you can bring up at a subsequent meeting. If we include language about reconsider and renew, although it is in Roberts Rules, if we want to put it in these procedures, that's fine with me. So I think that we are agreeing, it's just really not being clear about the difference between reconsider and renew, because there could have been an option if you looked at renew previously when, when this came up.
Well, yes, and there are two chapters on both of those in Roberts Rules, so it's, it emerges as being pretty, pretty clear when you, when you look at it, when the situation arises, in my opinion. So, but I don't know that we need to even reference that here, since it is referenced elsewhere in this document.
Chair, I'm supportive of going back to the old language. I don't think that it presents any kind of a problem, but could we go back to that screen real quick? I would like to take a look at those exceptions again, and see if, was there a particular reason why we had those exceptions on there?
Counsel, if you're talking about, it looks like Section P, which has a motion to reconsider, and it has some exceptions, the exceptions are there because that's part of the rule under Roberts Rules. And so if you're, my suggestion was that if you're going to have these rules listed in there, that it would be important to also keep the exceptions in there. So that's why they were placed in there.
Yes, so I'd like them all removed, because I, I think it's an impediment, but I think O should be in. Just to clarify this for all future PA and future counselors, that we can, if we have an inconclusive vote, in order to be able to conduct our business, that it can be renewed or reconsidered with a majority wanting to do so.
I totally concur with what you said, would just like to see shall be considered lost, replaced with the newer, better language that we have now. That's the only thing. But removing the exceptions in P, yes, I agree. No reason for those.
And I would also recommend on O at the end, appropriate as described in these Rules of Procedure or Roberts Rules of Order, so that there's no confusion that that's actually driving that, not the Rules of Procedure.
Yeah.
Okay, I can make those changes. Why don't we scroll, keep on this one for a minute, and just scroll down so we can make sure we're adding back. So then, section, the previous Section Q has the motion to reconsider.
I think we should just keep it simple under O, saying that a renew or reconsider may be appropriate per cent to the Rules of Procedure and Roberts Rules, and take out all the specifics on, of what that is, and let the Roberts Rules of Order. Otherwise, we're just putting in the whole document. As long as we're referencing it, I don't think we need to have any other details on that.
I concur with that.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand. So can we scroll back up, please? Okay, so I will make the changes to O that you've already discussed. And so I heard some say that they wanted to keep... Okay, so you're wanting to take out all of P, all of Q, is that correct? And all of R. So we're only making the one change to O. Is that correct?
Well, let's pop back up to O. The word "lost" is talking about not passing.
Okay, yes. Because this is from the prior one, so that, to my knowledge, that it says, it should say the motion fails to pass.
I'm in agreement with that.
So basically, this letter O, I'm, instead of saying, the motion shall be considered lost, it will say, the motion fails to pass. So I will make that change. And then the rest of that O is the same, except at the end, I will add Rules of Procedure and Roberts Rules. Is that accurate?
Well, not "and." Didn't you say, Kathleen, as...
Or.
How was it, as described in Roberts Rules, or how was that?
I'm probably keeping the Rules of Procedure in there, but I think we need to include the Roberts Rules, because that's describing it. So I would say Rules of Procedure or Roberts Rules.
Or?
Or, and/or, I don't really...
Yeah, I think "or" is fine. So, okay, I'll make those changes. Thank you. Now we can go back to the current one. And I don't believe I had any other changes. That was the only section I had worked on, on this.
Chair?
I've got a...
Yes?
I have a comment. I proposed some ethics language, I think back in February. What's, what's the status on that?
Counselor, I can send that, if you wish, to the rest of the council, because I'm not sure if that's going to fit into here, or if that would be a change to the ethics ordinance, because all the ethics piece has been pulled out as a separate ordinance. But if you are ready, I can send that to the rest of the council, and we can put it on next week's discussion.
Yes, please, thank you.
Can you just, I, I don't remember, what was the gist of it, Michelle?
Counselor Medvedje, I'd have to go back and honestly look at my email, because it's been a while, just like the Section O, so I'd have to look at my email.
Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Counselor Young.
I had a series of questions that I sent to staff on Monday. I don't know if those were reviewed at all. Oh, it's just regarding the whole entire Rules of Procedure. It was probably about five or six questions. Okay, appears not. But I was curious, so going through this on page five, and letter D, to me, this doesn't really clarify what would happen in the event that a chair or vice chair decided to step down from their chairmanship but remain on the council. I don't think it clarified that. And then E, if, once, once, this kind of, this points out what happens to the counselors' committee assignments when they step down or when they resign, but it doesn't address what happens once a vacancy is filled, and how that process moves forward, whether it's just reassign the same committees to that new council, or if we go through the process over again.
Did, excuse me, Counselor Young, did, were we going to address each one of these as you go through, or I wasn't...
It's, it's up to you. It's up to everybody. Yeah, it's up to everybody. I know that we want to get on with this, but I feel like these are important things that should be addressed at some point.
So the process we have at our retreat would be essentially the process. And if someone, for whatever reason, is not available to do all their committee assignments, I mean, we'd have to all get together and go through them all again to parcel them out.
Right, that's, that's addressed in here, but what's not addressed is when the new appointed counselor comes in, how are we doing that at that point? Do the, do the ones that we dispersed among us while there is a vacancy go back to that counselor the same as it was before, or do we readdress the whole thing from scratch again, all of our assignments?
Chair?
Go ahead.
I would suggest that we don't do it all over again, and they would get whatever...
Whatever, what the previous...
Assignment, the previous person.
Okay, and I'm okay with that. I just think that it should probably be addressed, or just pointed out.
Yeah, I think we can kind of play that by ear, especially, you know, if you get a new counselor that is like, an absolute expert in an area, then, and they would be a really good fit to shift them into a different, I mean, I think we can do that on, kind of on the, as it happens, or if it happens. But I'm not against specific language, if you think something needs to be in here.
And then my next question is on page 10, which is under 11, and legal opinions. What I'm interested in having a short discussion about is, what is considered a legal opinion in this context? Is it the slightest question, legal question, to our PA representative, or is it in a formal, like, written opinion? What is being directed here? And my question would be also that it, I don't know that this is consistent with, I think it's 2.6 of the charter, or 6.2, whichever one that is.
Thank you, Counselor Young, for your question. So in terms of formal legal opinions, I don't, you know, I wasn't here when this language was drafted, so I don't know exactly what was meant by the term formal legal opinion, but I'll just state, from the prosecuting attorney's office, we certainly don't require, you know, a written memo from the council to say, we want, you know, formally, we want this legal opinion. There's a difference between a legal opinion, meaning we have this legal question that we want answered, and that requires a majority, or what the language says it requires, approved by the county manager, council chair, or a majority of the council. When there are questions that are related, you know, just to process, or, you know, that is an easy procedural legal question, that doesn't require a majority vote, you know. There are many times where counsel will say, hey, you know, what's, you know, how many votes do we need? Or something, you know, something that's simple, some type of procedure. But when it requires, you know, legal analysis, a legal opinion, that's, my understanding is what this is referring to.
So I would like to expand on that, because this is, this has been something that has just been driving me crazy since I've been here. So number one, we don't have lawyers. They belong to the PA. They have no duty or loyalty to us as clients. They do answer questions when they come up orally, and so I think that the difference here is presented in writing. And we have one of those pending right now. We had asked for a formal written opinion on the rail dependent use, so we get it in writing. This is, it's a statewide issue, and just to, you know, jurisprudence in the United States, and Washington State's no different, depends on loyalty and conflict-free relationships. Most counties in the United States of America have their own, a county council like this, Board of Freeholders, Board of Supervisors, whatever it's called in the, in the vast number of states, has their own legal office that they hire and fire. In fact, the county I came from last, in California, the general counsel for the Board of Supervisors was the highest paid employee in the county, and he had his own lawyers that were all hired and fired at the will of the Board of Supervisors. So there's loyalty, there's advocacy, there's no, there's limited conflicts of interest in that relationship. We have the opposite here, and we've seen that pop up in different regards. When we were doing, well, redistricting, that was incredibly problematic with the PA's office representing every party to that process, and they all had conflicts of interest. So we can't solve that. It's a statewide issue here. But I think that what you're asking is, it's just in the words in writing, you know, a formal memorandum, a formal opinion, like in our equivalent of an AG opinion. If we were going to go to the state AG and say, please give us an opinion on this, I think that's what we're asking. That's different from random, day-to-day, hey, I've got a question about this, what's the answer? The issue becomes, is that an off-the-cuff answer that was thoroughly researched and vetted? Is there precedent? That's where the written opinion comes in. Okay, take your time. I mean, it's the first thing you learn in law school. First year of research and writing, how to write a legal memorandum. So that's what this provision goes to, is something more than just a superficial, off-the-cuff opinion by a lawyer, something in writing and more formal.
So could I perhaps give a theoretical example, and just, I'm just trying to clarify. So if one counselor, or perhaps two counselors, have something that they would, an agenda or something that they would like to change, something, that, something that we do in the county, a process of some sort, and they come to you and they ask, what are the legal hurdles of this? Can this be done? Those types of questions, you know, those initial kind of fact gathering process about something that they may want to change.
Who is it that the two counselors came to? The county manager, or the chair? Or another counselor?
I'm not sure I understood that question.
You said that there were two counselors who wanted to do something differently than what we currently do, and they would, they would take it somewhere. Where did they take it?
To our PA's office, whoever would be the best representative to answer that question, I suppose.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the discussion and for your questions. So first of all, I do want to just make a point that while the PA's office pursuant to the statute does represent the county and all of its departments, including individual employees when they are sued, the PA's office does support the council and does provide legal advice. In response to your question about coming to the PA's office with a particular legal question, it would require three counselors, although I would not suggest talking with three counselors unless you're, you know, we're in an executive session, because that would violate the OPMA. So pursuant to the current language, it would require going to the county manager or the chair to, you know, seek those legal opinions.
So my question is, this, to me, it contradicts with the charter. The charter states explicitly that a counselor can go to any elected, you know, can go into staff under the county manager as well as to staff that are under other elected officials to ask any questions.
So I am looking at, it's Section 2.6 of the Charter, Relationship with Other Branches. Let's see here. I'm just looking for the part where it talks about...
It should be the, the last one on there, I believe.
So when it talks about submitting a request for information to another elected official, I read that as not, you know, if it's going to the other elected officials, not the PA's office asking for a legal opinion, but it's more about asking for, you know, for instance, as an example, if you wanted information from the sheriff's office, you'd ask information. That's more information gathering rather than, I mean, this is the way I read it, rather than asking for a legal question. So I see that distinction there, but that's me just having looked at this right here and now.
Yeah, and this is where, I think this is critical, because to me, asking whether changing impact fees, or how we collect them, or how we process them, or how we determine them, that to me is information gathering, less than a legal opinion. So, and, and the reason I think this is important, because there are times that we, the council, might have something that we are looking into accomplishing, but it's not appropriate in its infancy to bring it up at a public meeting for a discussion. And the way that it's written in here, we've got to have a majority, which can only be done here at the... And the way that it's written in here, we've got to have a majority, which can only be done here at the dais in, in front of public. So, to me, I, I don't think this is a, I, I, I understand the, the impacts to the PA's office and, and the time that it would take to gather information, and I would hope that we always have counselors that are very careful with that time. I mean, it's part of our conduct that we're prudent with our resources. But I also don't want anything that's prohibiting us from being able to do our, our, our job effectively.
I appreciate that. I just.
I wholly concur, and I think it's a point well taken, and, I know John Horace is sitting here, the Honorable John Horace. Thank you. You know, we have independent elected officials that can come, as a single elected, and ask a question. We shouldn't be in less of a position to ask a question. I, I think the defining point is, does it, is it a written? I mean, even our contracts are signed, approved by the PA as to form only, which is, I'm like, oh, are you kidding? You know, no, no contracting legal advisor would ever do that. They would review it for form and substance, to that it's in the public interest. But, but I, I think your point's well taken, and I think the defining thing is, does it, does it just simply get answered? Because I think the PA's office should absolutely be responsive to you, or me, or Sue, or Michelle, or, or our chair. And, uh, but if, if, but if we want it in writing, I mean, that's what we've traditionally done, is have three that agree to it, or the chair, or the manager. But I don't know if the charter says to that. I haven't really looked at the charter with that in mind, because obviously, a single elected office, like the sheriff here, could get a.
Would it be possible to bring that up on our screen?
We can do that. And also, just to clarify, certainly, the PA's office is wanting to provide the legal advice. It's not, it's not a timing issue, it's not, you know, putting, you know, more work on us. I mean, that's what our office is there for. Just want to make sure that we're following, you know, what the charter and the rules of procedure state.
And let's be sure that we're not confusing apples and oranges, because with all due respect to our, our sheriff, I'm not going to be going to him for a written legal opinion on things. The written legal opinions is probably not in his domain, but would be elsewhere. And so, uh, we could go to him for one set of things that is not referred to in this, um, in, in, in this document.
And I, you know, this is, for me, this is also a larger conversation other than legal opinions, because the charter is clear that the council can't direct staff or separate electeds on work. Yes, requesting information, but to what extent? Because, you know, the time that it's taking to respond, I think, needs consideration, and, um, possibly further discussion with the council to get that majority, if it's going to take a significant amount of staff time.
I don't know if this would need to be ironed out in the charter, because I, I, I understand and I respect that, that opinion, but also, I don't want us as policy setters to be restricted to any information that is pertinent to the decisions that we make. So, this is a difficult balance.
It should be tied to your policy discussion, not operations, or how the policy is being implemented. There is a distinction between the two. Also, just, I just want to do a time check, um, so that we're, that council has time to have these discussions, and also not, and be mindful of, um, our agenda today.
Is this the only charter language that, I mean, it's not specific to the issue, but is this it? What we're seeing right here on the screen?
This is the one that Counselor Young was referencing, in terms of, um, speaking to other electeds or departments.
Yeah, and Section 2 of, um, the charter is about the legislative branch. It talks about the organization, the term, the powers of the council, rules of procedure, and the relationship of other branches.
Chair? Yes, go ahead.
I suggest we stick a pin in this, and in eight months, we'll be looking at this again. Don't we adopt this every, uh, annually? And, you know, we'll have a chance to see where there's been frustrations, or things have worked or not worked. And I think, I don't know, I think, uh, it could take quite a while to resolve this. But I say, I would just like to, let's bring it up next, next year.
I would like to address this, because to me, it's important that, again, and not directing staff, but when I, when we're looking at a policy decision, and there are, there's the information that we need to be able to understand that policy, there should be no roadblock to us getting that information.
I don't know what that means. In practice, that could mean way too many things, to where it could end up being interference with the day-to-day. It could be a violation of Section 2.6, Item A, here. So, I, you know, we just have to be prudent in, uh, simple following of the intent of what is meant here, in my opinion. And I don't know who interprets this, maybe that's Leslie, but, uh, it seems pretty straightforward. And, but, we just can't get all wrapped up in it, and get, get it all convoluted to say, well, I don't know the fine tune of, of what this means. We, we, we just can't do that as policymakers, because it, it gets us off into left field, I'm afraid.
And many times, if there's a, a policy issue that's under, or in front of council for your deliberation and consideration, there's a work session, which provides, um, information, time for questions and answers, before anything goes to a hearing. And sometimes, we do more than one, like almost 79th, you know, depending on what council's questions are and stuff.
Right, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm referring to is things in its infancy, ideas of how we can change things at the county level, how we can change our policy to be better. And I just, as, as policy setters, I don't want to have any barrier to our ability to, to make changes, if they're necessary for the county, and, and that starts at the very beginning with information gathering. And, you know, I'm not able, on my own, to get any kind of advice as to how we jump through the hoops to get a change looked at, to begin with. I understand that we eventually get to that point where we have a workshop, but I'm referring to the point in time prior to that.
So, Madam Chair, and I know we can go on and on and on, I, I kind of like sticking a pin in it at this point, but this is such an important point of discussion. And if it, as we, is it, as it relates to the PA legal support, and whether we get our legal answers answered, it's, it's a state issue. And if I may be as bold, I've had this conversation with Tony, and he absolutely agrees, and if I'm hopefully not stepping outside what he told me. This is an anachronistic part of Washington State law. And I understand that it has been brought up from time to time at the legislature to correct it, and never moved out of committee. He has opined to me that if it was to be addressed by the legislature, we're about to end this session, if there was some political will to fix this, you know, hey, we need our own lawyers to do our work. He would testify in favor of, yeah, this is an anachronism. I'm a prosecuting attorney. I want to focus on criminal law. This, uh, support of the county council, or the sheriff, or the treasurer, or auditor, is somewhat of an, an anachronism. So, I don't think, we can't solve that today. And I think the language, we will sort through, maybe we can take it up again in the future. But I, I just want you to, if we have time during this meeting, I actually have it on my comments, that I want to address exactly your issue, in proposing a charter amendment that we could support that would help give us better capacity as a council to perform our budgeting and legislative function. Anyway, so I, I'd go back to, let's stick a pin in it and move on.
Yeah, the charter amendment concept is certainly one that deserves our attention, and there will be several charter amendments in all likelihood. However, today, Section 2.6, Item A, is interesting, but not relevant to our agenda. So, I guess I would suggest that we get back to where we need to be, which I think we're on council vacancies.
Chair, if I could just make a quick comment, because I can appreciate Counselor, I can appreciate Counselor Young's frustration in figuring out, um, how to make policy changes. And I think that we have a vacancy in our, uh, policy director. That's a resource that could help. And, uh, again, I'm, I'm happy to take a look at this in a few months, and then maybe we'd have some, maybe have specific examples even now, but maybe there'd be more.
As it pertains to today, I think that Section 2.6, Item A, is not, uh, something that we're, we're dealing with on our agenda today. So, I would suggest that we get back to the item that is on our agenda. We talked briefly about 2.4, counselor vacancies. I'm not sure that we concluded that conversation. Is that where we need to start?
Chair, I believe Counselor Belkott had a comment.
Thank you, Counselor Young. I just was just saying that I concur with Counselor Marshall. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. So, now we're looking at the draft counselor vacancy policy. This is a policy that, you know, we took out of the rules of procedure. Just so you know, this, when it comes time to become the ordinance, it will be in the actual form of an ordinance. I know this is just kind of draft language here. So, in looking at the code, it looks as though it would be appropriate to put it under 2.04A, just because 2.04 talks about the council, so that's a suggestion. I have some language in here about how it's pursuant to the charter, Section 6.7B2, requiring the council to fill a county counselor vacancy by appointment, and, and what is required. So, uh, we can go through this. I don't know if you have specific questions that you want to ask at the beginning, but essentially, I've, um, put this into different categories. So, first is Section A, which talks about the appointment process. This talks about when a counselor position is officially declared vacant, and what's listed there is what is set forth in the RCW.
Yeah, so I had sent some suggestions by email. I don't know who I had copied. I know I always try to copy at least one counselor within the rules of public meetings. But, and I haven't read what you've come up here in detail, I'm just scanning it right now. But the first, uh, thing that abuts, or comes up against what my suggestion was, a counselor vacating their position cannot participate in the appointment process. Then we have a two-to-two tie, and then it goes to the governor. So, what dictates that sentence? Because I would like to remove that. You know, obviously, if something happens where they're gone, they're no longer a counselor, obviously, they can't participate. But if they're saying, hey, I'm leaving in six months because of X, Y, or Z, they should be able to participate, and then we would have a full council, and we would have, uh, we wouldn't have the possibilities of two-to-two ties, which we really did in great measure. So, anyway, where does that come from? Why, why is that sentence in there?
Thank you, Counselor Medvedev. So, the reason it says this is because, um, and perhaps it could be part of the appointment process, the, that would be up to the council. The reason this was added is because, um, there can't be a vote on who we'll replace until after the position is vacant. Okay?
Yeah, so that's the next legal issue.
Right.
But there's a lot of process before we ever, you know, nomination process, interview process, before we ever get to take a vote, uh, as a council. And I, and so I'm, that was going to be my next question, is that state law that says you can't have a vote in anticipation of a vacancy? You can only do it once it's already vacant? I mean, I'm not talking about a sudden death from car accident. I'm certain, in this circumstance where you have a plan, I am, I am resigning my position, and it's going to be effective months in advance, on the 1st of April, whatever it is. Is it state law that prevents all of the process occurring prior to the vacancy?
So, that's a good question, and I don't want to answer it right now without having reviewed it. So, um, I will make a note. You know, this is just our, kind of our first draft, so I'll make a note to follow up on that.
So, that's my concern, and we live this, and you can anticipate it. You know, as soon as you're down to four people, then you're going to have a tie, you're going to have a disagreement, and then it gets delayed and delayed. Thank goodness that the governor, um, in the last instance, responded very quickly. You know, contrary to what the Colombian had opined, that his appointment wouldn't come for some time in the future. He, he appointed right away, but we can't count on that. And so, we could have a, a very lengthy vacancy, and I'd like to prevent that. And that's, that's what a lot of the language was that I sent to you, was geared to prevent that situation from reoccurring.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Medvedev. I'll take a look at that and bring that, uh, to the council the next time we discuss this.
And I only made that comment, because I can see the Colombian is represented today.
One real quick comment on this. First of all, I really like this. I think this is very well-written. I do understand Counselor Medvedev's concern. One thing, I don't know if it's good or not, but it is, one option that would prevent that would be holding the, the vote in a ranked choice format.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just groaned audibly when I heard that, and, and I'm sorry to see the pink cast. I'll have to hear that story later. I have no, no support for any ranked choice voting in any regard.
Neither do I. Neither do I.
Sounds like we won't be headed that direction.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
My only comment would be, I think, uh, if you have a two-to-vote, it, it, it's good to have a high bar, and if you can't get three, then, uh, you should probably keep looking, would be my suggestion. And then, uh, I think this, uh, draft policy looks very good. I just want to highlight, under A, the second paragraph, that the person taking office to, uh, that the person appointed will hold that office up until the next election is certified, and then the person who, uh, is elected takes the remainder term. There was confusion about this last time when I came in, and I just want that to be sort of publicly aware of that.
And, and once again, I don't think we have any control over that. It's really an anomaly. I mean, normally, when someone is appointed, uh, they have the office until the next general election, when they can, then would get a full term instead of a short term. I mean, that's, I think, as a result of a real quirk in state law, that, uh, I think the original, if, original intent was just to keep odd and even elections balanced in some way. But it, it has the, and I went through it. I mean, I had to run again, have run a full campaign after one year in office, when normally, most states would just say, okay, once you've been through a general election, you've got a full term. You're not just concluding the unoccupied term, but, but, yeah, it was, it kind of got by everybody on the short term, and when it could be filled and sworn in.
Counsel, are you feeling the need to look at this in greater detail and bring back the subject of counselor, uh, appointment process at our next meeting on rules of procedure and this topic?
Well, from my point of view, I've asked two legal questions about why we, you know, that would prevent. I want to get rid of the language that the full council can't participate while we have a full council. I want to avoid that. I mean, I want the whole. I want to avoid that. I mean, I want the whole council participating up until the point where the vacancy occurs. And then the second legal question was, you know, can the vote only occur after the person is gone? I mean, those are two pertinent legal questions that we need to answer before we can really take a substantive look at this.
And that would mean that we would be postponing it until our next discussion, when those questions are answered, correct? So shall we agree to do that?
Yes.
And if there are additional questions that you wish to add for that consideration, for Leslie to think about and include either options, or answers, or whatever, let's be sure that we email her what those are prior to the next meeting.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes?
I have a quick issue related to the Code of Professional Conduct, which we didn't get to.
And, which is not on our agenda, but perhaps right there along with ethics. I was, I was just going to say, perhaps right along there with ethics, that is something to be discussed and dealt with.
So Chair, would you, so the Clark County Code of Professional Conduct is part of the Rules of Procedure? Did you want to have Counselor Marshall discuss that now, or at the next meeting?
Well, maybe to introduce the topic, and then for us to discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. On page 17, it's the, the last full paragraph, relates to unexcused absences. And it says three or more, we took out consecutive, but it's council meetings, work sessions, and council time. And it was my understanding that we were just going to refer to three council meetings and leave off work sessions and council time meetings, because there is the potential that one could miss three meetings in less than a 24-hour period. And if we went to just the council meetings, that would be a month and a half. So I thought, so I would suggest that we strike work sessions and, or council time.
Leslie, are council meetings described elsewhere in this document to include our assigned committees?
There are several different sections that talk about a Tuesday meeting, what council time is, and what work session are. There are very specific descriptions that is going to be. Section four, which is, section four talks about regular meetings. Five is special meetings. So for the regular meetings, it includes the Tuesday meetings as well as council time.
Could we perhaps just add text in there to say that no, you know, that any meetings missed in one day cannot account for more than one absence?
And I think the question still goes begging as to whether, let's say, for instance, you're assigned to work with CREDC, and their meeting date is on a different date. However, the counselor doesn't attend without excuse. Is that an excused absence or not? So it's questions like that, that I'm not sure where the answer would fall in what is written now. Maybe what we should do is review the existing language that you just pointed out to us, Leslie, on the different meeting types that are alluded to in this document. And then from that, we could make a decent determination on Roman numeral five, I believe it is?
I believe it's Roman numeral four.
Four, is it? Okay.
It's five under the conduct. It's four where it talks about regular meetings.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have any objection to what both Glenn and Sue had mentioned as possible remedies here. But harkening back, and maybe my recollection is false on this part, when we first started discussing this over a year ago, or two years ago, my recollection is that we didn't have the legal authority to remove any counselor. I mean, that was a function of state law that went to issues of recall. I mean, we're talking about elected office here, recall or incapacity. You know, absent those, I didn't think we had local legal authority to remove a fellow counselor. So what, is my recollection false? Or is, I mean, we had that discussion, and kind of in great detail, quite some time ago, that we didn't have the authority to remove, actually remove, from an elected office.
Well, and I don't, I'm not sure that that's what this language is doing. I think this language is just saying that they've, because this is separate from, and in addition to, any action pursuant to state law against the council that allegedly has abandoned their duties of office, but it doesn't talk about removing. The next section talks about what the council could do, which is things such as issuing a final written order, that they cease and desist, a public admonishment, or a public censure. So that's in the next, if you go to the next page on 18. So I don't, I don't read any of this language to mean that the council is removing them from office.
So I was simply misreading, and I thought that's what the focus of some of the discussion was. So we're back to censor removal from committees, which is maybe a plus instead of a hardship. But, okay, fair enough.
Chair, I'd just like to clarify quickly.
Yes.
My suggestion is just to strike on line two of the last paragraph on page 17, council work sessions or council time, just to strike those.
Well, let's take that under advisement for discussion the next time when we talk about the document as a whole, and what meetings count or don't count.
Yeah, and I would just point out that the whole reason for that was, and we basically had a request from a prior counselor to reschedule our Wednesday meetings, because they conflicted with something that was undisclosed, that the counselor was going to be doing in their other professional life. And we had voted not to change our, alter our public schedule and keep it, and then that counselor just simply took it upon themselves to stop coming. And so that was the whole reason for even doing this. So I'm not sure I would favor removing council times. Important, as well as the work sessions are very important.
For example, we're in a council time right now. So Leslie, are you prepared to bring back a draft with the changes we've talked about?
Yes, I will certainly do that.
I say bring back, I should say send to us in advance.
I can do that as well.
Does this take some finely tuned reading to make sure we're getting the thought correct? Anything further before we move on?
Nothing on these two items. Thank you.
Okay. Kathleen, anything?
No, thank you.
So under new business proclamation request for older Americans Month?
Yes, the Commission of Aging is requesting May 2023 is Older Americans Month. This is a proclamation that council has done in the past. And if this is, if there's any changes to the draft proclamation, please let us know. Otherwise, we will put this on a Tuesday meeting for your consideration.
So I fully support it. I'm assuming Older Americans Month is a nice way of saying us old people. But I just want to revisit, at some point, we need to give some attention to, you know, word count, formatting, you know, just coming up with some kind of agreement. I mean, just the last round of proclamations we had, we had one that was extremely lengthy, and then others that were more concise and well-said. And I think, you know, administratively, we need to come up with a tighter process in getting these things through the system. And, you know, and I point to Black History Month as well. We started a week before February, and then didn't get it published until like the third week of February. And I know that was, you know, maybe when our new policy advisor's on board, that's something they could attend to, to see if we could fix that process.
Chair? I would just say-
Chair, you're muted.
I like the language, and I think let's move forward with this.
Which is what I said on mute. So that makes three of us. Thank you. Counselor reports.
So in the interest of time, I'll try to either talk faster or not talk as much. We've, we had a lot of history here years ago on a proposal to open up our rural lands to more opportunity for rural businesses. And that, in part, was sparked by what was seen as a very arbitrary and capricious rule about vineyards being able to have wedding venues, for instance. And so I got to tell you, some of the staff was just telling people who had grew flowers, okay, well, you don't, you're not a winery, why don't you just plant some grapes? And you can become a winery, then you can have, have become a wedding venue. I mean, it was, it really was very poor code. We had a lot of work done. We had public, open houses. And it was researches what could be done, what didn't need to be done, you know, what the avenues were for isolated events to get approved through code. But the upshot of it was, a lot of work was done, and then nothing. And one day, I just asked the person who was doing all the work on staff, where are we at? When is this coming back to the council for consideration of code amendment? And the answer was, oh, it's not needed, we just dropped it. Which was essentially the executive branch just making policy, and we never got back to it. But in the interim, I've had, you know, episodic requests from individual constituents that have ideas for rural businesses that would be appropriate in the location that they have, and they're asking for code change. And I think I circulated to everyone, just for information, over only some suggestions by one of the Port of Camas Washugul counselors, John Spencer. And my recollection is also that either our planning department or DEEB had, a few months ago, suggested some code changes. The moral of this is, I think we should go back to it, readdress it, and look to be fair and impartial, and have codes that may or may not allow more widespread uses in appropriate locations. I mean, the upshot of the public meetings were literally 50% of the people in the rural community supported it, 50% did not. But the initiatives have ended.
Kathleen, question. Because of a particular constituent's request, we've been following up on this a bit behind the scenes. And I believe that you were looking to see what was the current status of this. Does staff have an answer to that now?
Yeah, I believe Community Development is actually ready to come to council and discuss this and options moving forward.
Okay, let's schedule that, if that's okay with, certainly is with me and with Counselor Medvedji. Is there another?
Chair?
Yes.
I would be supportive of that. I've shared this information. I recall when it came up, what, a year ago? I don't remember that there were public meetings about it, but I think there is interest, and I'm waiting to hear back from the Food System Council and Farm Bureau, so get some feedback from them.
Great. Well, let's go ahead and get that scheduled, Kathleen. And if you could let us know in advance when that's going to be, so that we can be sure and let our constituents know of that date, so that they don't miss it, since, when they have a particular interest in that, we'd appreciate it.
And, Chair-
Yes, and I was just going to say, Counselor Medvedji, thank you for bringing that up.
A couple of additional issues. One, I don't, I'm kind of interested, and we've had a lot of constituent suggestions, that we take a right of proclamation or resolution, take some vocal position as a council in addition to the one we took on tolling last year or so. You know, I would like to address a proclamation that discusses third crossings, the least-cost bridge replacement. Potential super, separate future planning for light rail, whether it's in a tunnel, or rail right-of-way expansion, together with an updated rail bridge. A focus today on freight movement and congestion relief, and suspension of tolling discussion until design and costs are truly known. What we, all of this is morphed into, with this locally-preferred option, is right back to what the failed CRC was. You know, this expansive list of really costly add-ons to the cost of replacing a capital structure. You know, and we're right back to tolling and adding a rail, which, you know, all of these are add-ons, and all the interchanges, you know, the locally-preferred option, it was just kind of a narrative where all these stakeholders agreed to it. Well, they all agreed to it with very specific stated objections. So another narrative would be, boy, all the stakeholders disagree with how this is proceeding right now because of these reasons, but it was worded differently. You know, we've gotten so far back to where the starting point was that failed, and I don't know how we got here, but I would just say one thing from my experience on the RTC, because we had the deputy briefing us on the locally-preferred option. And one of the questions that was asked, and it was asked by me, well, what lessons did you learn from the first failed process? And surprisingly and disappointingly to me, it wasn't that, well, one, we should listen to the objections and take them into consideration. You know, people want a third quarter, people want congestion relief. People don't want light rail right now. But the answer came back, we learned to put out a different narrative. We're sticking to our guns as to the failed CRC originally, but we're going to sell it differently. That's essentially what the answer was. So anyway, I would like to see either some kind of proclamation or resolution if we have the will to speak up.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Medvedji, for that. Actually, this was going to be my council report today. I've already drafted a six-page white paper on the subject of tolling and giving the feedback that could, could, I hopefully would, be approved by our council. We are at a point where on April 21, the Toll Project Environmental Assessment Committee has requested- has requested feedback, and they've requested feedback from the larger population, which includes us. This is not requesting it just from the board or some small group, it's requesting it from us. And so I have something that is, is ready. It needs the ordinance attached to it, which will come next. And I think I'll turn next to Kathleen. When, knowing that we need to get this out, if we were to be effective, by April 21, when could this come before council?
It'll be next Wednesday. We'll have a draft posted by noon on Friday with our council time agenda, and it'll be posted at that time for next Wednesday's consideration.
Okay. And, you know, if particular councillors have particular points that you would like to see included or expanded or whatever, I tell you, that, that report, the six pages for the white paper, could become volumes. Because if it touches on all of the points that you mentioned, Counselor Medviji, it suddenly does become volumes, because there is so much information to be covered. But at any rate, I think this will be a major step forward, not the only step forward, that we will want to take in this regard. And that will be the fourth major ordinance that we would have passed on the I-5 and associated matters with the I-5, such as tolling. So that's my report, and thank you for getting that scheduled, Kathleen.
And, Madam Chair, I had two related additional things I wanted to bring up, and I've sent some of it by email, don't respond to all, but there were ideas on charter amendments. And it gets back to some of the discussion we just had at the beginning of this, capacity. You know, if we want to put a ballot measure on to amend our charter, time is short, and we don't have capacity to really get it done in time, which, so I have two charter amendments I'd like to propose. One is on procedure. As we saw from the last charter go-around, one, there was kind of a loophole that allowed them to put measures on over the course of two years, not just one election, and I'd like to close that. But most importantly, I'd like to focus any future charter commissions on a process. And I'm going to outline that very briefly. One, you know, our county manager participated in almost every single meeting, as far as I know, and was rarely, if ever, consulted. Meaning, hey, you're the chief of the executive, what do we need to change to make governments more efficient? Not once was she questioned about that. And that didn't inform them on what they should address in the year that they were empowered. Two, not a single elected official, not the sheriff, the treasurer, the auditor, any county councillor, not one who are doing the actual job, was asked, hey, what needs to change? What can be better? So I think that's important as a process. What I'd like to propose as a ballot measure is a process. One, after they're constituted, not changing how the constitution occurs, after they, you know, first order of business is to elect their leadership, second order of business is to set up the public meetings with the elected officials and the county manager. So, and, because that would inform them on what their work should be. So that's one portion of it. I would like to have a separate charter amendment that allocates us some capacity. You know, we, we have no employees whatsoever. We have no research, you know, I mentioned the PA side of it, no research and drafting capability. We have no capacity. We have a vacancy in our economic advisor that's never been filled, we're in the process of filling our policy analyst. So what I would propose is that we actually get either seconded to us, which I had proposed to the PA in getting some legal support allocated to us, or actual FTE positions moved from the manager, from the executive, to us. So the core would be our economic analyst, our policy advisor, and then one or two experts in land use from one of the departments. And it, perhaps it doesn't even have to be a full-time position, but something that gives us a capacity that we can go to, that they work for us, they're loyal to us, and we can say, hey, we need to have a 10% budget cut in this department, does that work? Or we see a problem in, in code, in development, how do we get to it? You know, what, what code can be eliminated? You know, right now, the county manager has all the capacity, and they're doing all the executive functions. You know, one time I had brought up questions about the budget early on, and I said, I'd like to make some cuts because I don't want to raise taxes. Where can we cut? Where's the soft part in the budget? And of course, the answer came back, oh, there is none. There's no cuts you can make. So we basically become a rubber stamp on budgets to some extent, because we don't have the capacity to get into the detail. And we also are at, you know, when I ask, where, where can we change code? What's the ambiguity in code? How do we make it more efficient? How do we eliminate the need for a second engineer's opinion? The answer has, has to come from the executive, and the answer is, well, there's no problem And that's not meant to be demeaning, it's just meant that we don't have any capacity to really get into the substance of these issues, because we have no staff to help us with these budgetary policy legislative issues. So I, I would like to tee that up as chapter, charter amendments, to give us some staffing support, some kind of drafting department, if you will. And, you know, two of the employees are already on the books, they just haven't been filled, or they remain vacant right now. And then maybe some capacity somewhere from Public Works, or some, someone who can really inform us on land use and code issues. Anyways, I, I think that exhausts the points I wanted to make, but I wanted the council to consider it and see if there's any will to do any charter amendments, because if we do, we need to start jumping on it right now, because it's, you know, it's a short haul to making the process for, to get it on a ballot.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I have a report. Well, first I have a question. I'm hoping that we'll be able to see that white paper that you've drafted soon, I'd like to take a look at that. And, and then I want to report on workforce Southwest Washington, that's one of my assignments, I'm on the, their board. And they informed us that they're undertaking a comprehensive workforce market study along with Clackamas Workforce Partnership and Work Systems to conduct a market study on the, that will inform the jobs and what training may be needed so that we can employ as many of our local folks in the interstate bridge replacement. This will, this, I think, is just kicking off, they may be available to report back to us on that information sometime this summer. So I just wondered if the council was interested in hearing back on their market study related to jobs and preparing people locally to fill those jobs.
I certainly would be interested in the GMA process before we come to the section on jobs after we've talked about population. Be perfect timing.
Great. And then just one more item related to the workforce. They have opportunities to invest in supporting individuals recovering from opioid usage and addiction, and I've connected them with David Shook, so there could be some additional resources there. It seems like this is, you know, they're really amazing organization and have these resources, and as much as we can connect them with our departments, I think that would be great. That's all.
And may we go back to Counselor Medviji's question of us. Do any, does anyone on council have the, state, state this correctly if I misstate it, Carrie, does anyone on council have the, the will to work with changes to the, the major documents that are before the county, that could, could become very significant changes for how we do business as a county?
Chair, I, I am.
You are?
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
I would be supportive of this, however, I consistently hear from our council complaints about time and that our plate is full, so we would be effectively adding two more time-consuming items. So I think this should be taken into consideration and the understanding that we are taking more on as a council, and we, there are consequences to that.
And therefore, are you opposed?
No, I would be supportive of it. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm sorry, I just needed to clarify there. So that actually makes at least four of us, because I am supportive as well. So Counselor Medviji will kind of talk, talk to you and look to you for leadership.
Chair, could I clarify real quickly something?
Yes.
I'm supportive of looking at it. I really have no understanding of what he's putting forward, but I'm definitely, I think the charter's a living document, and we should always be looking at potential changes that can make things better, so I'm supportive for that reason.
Thank you. And are there other councillor reports?
Chair.
Yes.
Real quickly, we had the Urban County Policy Board meeting last week, and it was kind of an update on last year's progress, rather, last year's reports. And we're going to go kind of a little bit dormant here, probably for a couple of months, because staff is really busy implementing on the process of moving forward with the recommendations that will ultimately come to us as a council to decide on. And I just wanted to thank staff. I attended the NAC, NACC meeting, I think yesterday or the day before, I don't know, time moves so quickly, but it, it functioned very well. So I appreciate that extra support with the device that Merrily has been able to incorporate into our work.
And I'm wondering if Amber could just give us a brief update. I, I mean, as a councillor report, I did have conversations with WSU Extensions Work for Commerce on broadband after your most recent meeting. And I, so what I was hearing is that Clark County is on track, we have some work to do in that process, but we're looking forward to grab our fair share of the money coming from the federal government to the state of Washington on broadband expansion. But Amber, you were in the meeting and led it, and are our leader on broadband initiatives on our team.
Yes, so we are on track. We met with our regional support team on, actually a couple days ago. So we are on track with our workbook to submit through WSU for the equity piece and the infrastructure. There's, there's two components. I am talking with City of Vancouver, and they're more looking at the equity piece, because their infrastructure's more developed than our rural areas. So we are going to be partnering with them, with, they have a consultant that's looking into that for the City of Vancouver. We are working with our regional partners to get our workbook done by June, so that we can submit our piece of the pie for the state, and then the funds will be allocated down from the, the federal to the state level. So we need to be sure that our mapping and our overlay for the broadband is up to date with the services that we provide in our community. So we've had some work done with our GIS, our Public Works, the team IT structure to get our package submitted on time, and so we are, we are on track, and we will be happy to come, you know, to council as needed, as we're doing this, to give updates, or if we wanted to do the final when we get closer to the submission of the, of the project.
Super. And, and I, from Senator Carrotwell's office, that meeting, I did get the PDF on their mapping that they had for Clark County, I did forward that to you. Maybe once the workbook, you're at that stage where the workbook's completed and submitted, maybe you could give us an update?
I would be happy to do so. Anytime, anytime that we, we're getting closer, we'll probably be half done, I would say the middle of May, and then we can also do the middle part, or we can do the end, so I'll leave that up to, to you all to decide what, how you want that reported back. But we are on track. We're a little bit behind, we came in a little bit on, behind on the end game, Lindsay was working on it, and we got a little bit of delay, but we're catching speed, and we have good people in our, in our GIS department that's able to assist with that.
Super, thank you very much.
Chair.
Yes, councillor?
Yes, I'd be interested in midpoint report as well as a final report, or if the whole council doesn't want that, I could just meet, meet with you individually.
Great, thanks, Councilor Marshall.
Are there other councillor reports?
Yes, Chair, I just want to echo what you said on the EIS public comment. It's due on the 21st of April. I sent out several emails to the council about that, and how important it is that people go and make public comment on the tolling, because ODOT is extensively going to be tolling the Oregon side of the river. I think that I shared that information with the council a few weeks ago during one of my Washington stakeholder meetings. There's going to be, I think, over 11 tolling points of areas. It's not going to be just the 205 and I-5 bridge, so it's very important that people are giving public statement on that. And also, last week, the tolling on the Washington side, and the Senate passed, and it's in the committee for public comment on the 13th tomorrow at 12:30 PM. So people can go and make public comment when it meets with the House Committee for Transportation tomorrow. And I've been asked several times about the county stance on tolling, and have been directing them to the county page that's dedicated to that, so thank you for that. And I think I've sent you a couple of things recently related to that webpage, as far as what our stance is on that. And I, that was also brought up, the tolling was brought up in the CTRAM meeting last night as well, so that's an ongoing conversation and a very important one.
Okay, and if, assuming there are no further councillor reports, let's go to the work session requests, and we have the one for freight rail dependent use. Kathleen?
Yes, so staff's requesting, and I know in prior discussions with council, there is a desire to have a work session regarding the freight rail dependent uses. So this is just the formal request, and we'll get it scheduled either, well, looks like in April or early May.
Okay, so you, you gave us three dates in something that we, that we have read, so April 26, or early May 3, or May 10. Thank you. Are there any policy issues that you wish to bring forward?
Not today, I'll provide additional updates next week.
Okay. And we now have the need to move into four executive sessions, which total 45 minutes. That would bring us back into this session of council time for dismissal and, and being able to close the agenda at, let's see, that would be, help me, 45 and 10, 55, that would be about, what, 12 noon?
I would say, I would say noon, yes.
Okay. So we will see everyone back here at that time, and meantime, we'll see you in executive session. And I thank you all, and wish you well. Bye-bye.
Hello, Vice Chair Medviji has asked us to announce that executive session will be extended for an additional 20 minutes, and open session will reconvene at 12:20 PM. Thank you. Hello, Vice Chair Medviji has asked us to announce that executive session will be extended for an additional 25 minutes, and open session will reconvene at 12:45. Thank you.
Okay, we are called back to order, and we have concluded our executive sessions. There is no action to state for the public record, and we are adjourned. Thank you. So these clocks aren't like atomic clocks, they're like...